Greetings.
Hello again. Sorry about that, but I think it worked, Tessa. So you should be good to go.
Deacon, it looks like you got a haircut.
You'll have to switch me back to being host, Becky.
I'm working on it.
Okay, cool.
You keep bouncing around every time somebody comes in.
I don't know if you're trying to speak to us, Deacon, but you're muted.
Hello.
Hi.
Hey, Deacon.
Hi.
Tessa, so are you all set?
Looks like it says host now.
Okay, good.
I don't know who meeting host is. Someone's signing it.
I've.
I saw a little notice that said, you know, Tessa has become the host or whatever. For whatever that's worth.
Good. I think you're good to go.
And it says you're the host and the participants, though, so.
And everybody knows how to change their name to add planning board, right?
Let's do that. Somebody's already done it for me.
That was me, Deacon.
Thank you.
Currently, I'm down as host, but obviously not. I think it's because I'm on the historical commission and I come in and out of this. I don't know why it's showing up this way. Sorry.
You can change it.
How do I do that?
Um. If you click on the little video camera, it should give you an option to rename.
Okay. Video camera.
If you hover your cursor in the upper right corner of your picture, there'll be three little dots. If you click on that, I think that lets you do it, too.
You can also right-click on your video.
Yep.
All right, let's try it out.
Well. It looks like we have a quorum now. We can get started.
The speed is going to the dog.
I know, she's terrible.
That yours?
That's mine. She's the love of my life. So I'll. I'll read the governor's announcement about the COVID situation. Following the governor's restrictions on public meetings, this meeting is being held virtually using zoom.com for remote participation. Public may access it following the instructions on this meeting's agenda posted on the town calendar. If despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide real-time access, the public can request a recording of this meeting by contacting clerk. Great. So. Francis Parisi is here. To talk about. Getting an extension on the special permit. For a cell tower off Wendell Road. So do you want to speak to this, Francis?
Good evening. As you all hopefully remember, my name is Francis Parisi, representing the applicant Fertex Tower Assets LLC. As I'm sure most of you remember. We received a special permit from the planning board. I believe in June of 2019 to construct a cell tower. Due to circumstances beyond our control, mainly surrounding the pandemic. We've been able to unable to commence construction. I'm not even sure if I need to be here yet. So I'm here, one, as a courtesy to give you an update and to two, to ask your opinion on something. During the pandemic, the governor declared a state of emergency. And as part of that declaration of the state of emergency, he put a. A tolling on permits. And. The and it's my understanding that the governor is going to lift the state of emergency sometime in June, maybe June 15th, I heard was the most recent date. And that time, the tolling of the. Clock for exercising our rights under the permit would expire and therefore the clock would continue to run. What I don't know is if. I get kind of like an extension automatically because. The permit was granted in June of 2019 and it expires in June of 2021. But if the clock told during that time, I might get an extra automatic courtesy of the governor. 14-month extension. And if not, then it expires in June and I need to get an extension from you guys. And I'm curious as to whether or not anyone, I've had this same conversation with multiple towns. No one seems to know the answer. I've reached out to the Mass Municipal Association and they're looking into it, but they haven't gotten back to me yet. And I didn't know if anyone had any insight on what's happened to permits and the expiration of permits during the pandemic under the state of emergency.
What the what the tolling should do is. When it became effective. Essentially, your your two-year clock and two years is how is how long you have in Chutesbury to make use of a special permit. Your two-year clock should have stopped. Then the tolling period, however long it goes, 14 months or whatever, when the tolling period is over, then your two-year clock. Starts up again right where it stopped. So you're essentially getting two years plus 14 months.
Right, I that's one that's that's one interpretation and I agree with that. No one on your side of the table has told me that. And they in other similar circumstances, they use the word. Extension and expiration. And so that's why I'm confused that. In related type. Issues that came up under the emergency declaration. It said that you don't have to do anything until the state of emergency is lifted plus 45 days. And like, for example, your time clocks for you folks to do stuff were relieved during the pandemic. For a period of time. And then they said, okay, now you've got to act within 45 days and when they opened that up again. So that's why I'm kind of confused as to. Whether or not I have 45 days from the. Lifting of the state of emergency or whether or not, as Mr. Lacy just said, the clock told because they they use kind of conflicting language in the legislation. And I, like I said, I've asked, I have similar circumstances in many towns. I was in front of the town of Conway last week. And we had the same discussion and they're reaching out to their town council to ask, but I have not heard back yet. So I didn't know whether. Anyone else had asked you guys the same situation, similar to my situation.
Well, I have a question that's sort of a twist on that because I looked up the what I thought was the emergency. Order. And the reference is to state permitting. And so I don't know if there's a separate emergency order that reflects just. Local municipality permitting. Because the tolling in this reference says. An approval issued by a state permitting agency valid as of March 10, 2020, and then it goes on to talk about the lapsing in the 45 days. So. No, we're not. We're not a state permitting agency. So I don't know if there was a separate emergency order that referenced the exact same dynamic, but at the local level, I didn't find.
I think further down, if you read, there's another paragraph that says that state permitting agencies includes municipalities. And and it specifically references planning boards.
Let me see.
There's the next question I was going to ask if, you know, the state permitting authority would extend to us because our. Authority is a special permit granting authority is, you know, provided by state law, right?
Correct. I believe there's a specific definition that.
Yeah, Francis, you're right. I'll just read it for everybody. It's a state permitting agency. Any agency, board, bureau, department, office, committee, division, or official of the Commonwealth which issues approvals and is within a reports. Oh, well, this is not us. Because it says within a report to the executive office of Energy and Environmental Affairs or executive offices, housing and economic development. So. We're neither in that or report to it. So I don't know if this. It might be another document, but this what my read of this one doesn't talk about tolling.
I can find it for you and send it to you guys.
That'd be great.
It's not, but um. And it was confusing because it went, it did multiple things. It relieved. For example, your obligation to follow all the statutory guidelines for convening meetings and making decisions and stuff like that. And it also extended permits that had been granted before the date, and I think it was a February date. So it tried to do multiple things and and they were throwing this together under. Extreme circumstances. So I don't think they worded it perfectly, but I think the intent was there. I don't know if I can send it to you right now, but I can certainly send it to you. So the. In any event, I'm going to need an extension, either courtesy of the governor or from you guys. And. I just. What I would hope that we could say. If necessary, you grant me an extension. And I think you're allowed to do that under state law irrespective of the. Emergency declaration and the COVID issue. And so I would respectfully ask that and just be put in there if necessary, so that if I do get the advantage of a 14-day tolling, we can take advantage of that 14-month toll.
Well, there are there are no provisions in our zoning bylaw for extending special permits. There is. There is something in the zoning act after 48 section nine. That talks about permits lapsing. No later than three years. You can set the time. At three years or less. Except for good cause. So somebody's got to make a discretionary call about good cause. And. That may be the special permit granting authority, which is us, might be the building inspector. Donna, I'm taking my cues from Donna. It sounds like it's us. Watch the bobbing head. So. I would say that that probably to hedge your bets, you ought to request. Something from us before the date that your thing runs out. Asking us for good cause to prevent the special permit from lapsing. And then I. I don't see any process laid out in in state law about how that should occur. My instinct tells me it should probably occur with a public hearing with the parties in interest noticed. And and your request being considered. That's my that's my feeling on it. But I think you need to get that in just to hedge your your bet on. On that before the date of of the lapse.
I've I got a question either for Jeff or Donna, I assume. When I was thinking about this, I looked in our zoning bylaws and. 9.4-3 is amendment. And I wonder if because amendment says you can amend the terms and conditions in the same process that was approved. So. I would think the terms would be fall under timing. Or is that not a correct read?
Well, there's nothing in this permit about duration or lapse.
Well, except for the date, I guess.
Yeah.
I believe that under state law. You your zoning bylaw can have a provision that says that. A special permit has to last. From anywhere from one years to three years. And yours specifically has a provision in there that says that. It shall lapse within two years. Except for good cause. And the state allows you to extend it for a period of time. Based on that provision in your zoning bylaw that says that. It expires except for good cause. So I agree with Ms. McNeil that it's the. Special permit granting authority that has the authority under state law to extend it. And under your zoning bylaw for good cause.
We don't have.
And that's what I don't believe that you need to. I think it's done administratively and not through the public hearing process. I don't know why you'd have. I've never had to go through a public hearing process before. Go ahead. Ms. McNeil seems to have a question.
Yeah, I don't. I don't necessarily think you need a hearing, Jeff. There's no provision for a hearing. But clearly it has to be done at a public meeting after posting. Because there's a good that's good cause. I mean, you need to come in, present good cause, and you make a determination. Whether it lapses after two years or it doesn't. And he needs to do it before the lapse.
Well, isn't that what we're doing tonight? Isn't this a public hearing, a public meeting? It was noticed, it was posted, it I requested it. I don't know why this isn't considered that. It's on your agenda.
Then I think it would qualify. But I also think the planning board could make a determination that they'd like to do a hearing. I don't think they have to do it administratively. They don't have any process in the zoning bylaw or the statute. That's mandated. So I think that I think most towns do it at a public meeting in this fashion, but you're not required to.
But I I agree with you that it should be done by the planning board and not administratively by a planner. But when I say administratively. Not through a public hearing process where the butters are notified. And, you know, I feel like it was posted. It was in the agenda. That's what that's what I've requested here. So I believe that the board could vote if they were so inclined. To extend it if necessary.
Donna, do you have, you know, if we were to do this, do you have any guidance in terms of the duration? Is it? Since it sounds like the state allows up to three years normally.
Well, the municipal modernization act changed it from two years to three years. So that's a very recent, not recent, recent, but recent change. It's been two years for decades. So but I think that you base the extension time on the good cause. You know. If they haven't even put a shovel in the ground and they haven't even finished their plans, they may want a lot more time. Than somebody that's close to putting a shovel in the ground. But or starting, you know, a business or something, but hasn't been able to quite do it within the two years for some reason. So, you know, I think you're going to base it on the good cause. There's no requirement that it be a specific amount of time for the extension.
Okay.
We would respectfully.
Modernization Act when they changed the special, a lot of the issues around special permits. As far as what you could do on appeals and things like that, when you could start construction, those kind of things clearly. Wanted to extend this. To give you towns at least the opportunity to allow special permits to not be used for. Three years. But two has been the standard for decades.
Thank you.
We would respectfully request another year extension. And the reason I say a year is because. We've been severely impacted by COVID. Our whole process has slowed down. You know, everybody in our our environment is working from home. Our engineer getting engineering stuff done has been very challenging. The getting materials, building materials has been incredibly challenging. The cost of steel has gone through the roof and a lot of it was shipped. Some of the electronic components were shipped from overseas. We can't get them. And. The issue, the other issue that we confront is. We like to start. Construction in the fall to be done by the winter time. So if I if I and it's pretty unlikely that we're going to start construction. Before the fall and therefore we lose six months of time just because we can't be. Doing heavy-duty outdoor construction in the winter time when there's snow on the ground. So. We tend to do a lot of our construction in the spring. So we're hoping to do it next spring and not this fall. So I'd respectfully request a one-year extension.
So Donna.
Yes, Jeff.
So it's up in the air about whether we can do this tonight at this hearing. Or this meeting that's that's not noticed to parties in interest. Or whether we can require that. We have. Some type of meeting. I don't know whether it's a public hearing or just a meeting that is is noticed to parties in interest. I mean, that's my preference.
What's the project? I'm.
It's so.
Cell tower on Wendell Road just before it bifurcates into Lockspond and Old Wendell on the left there. The woods just before.
I think it's I think it's technically known as Lockspond Road, but that was an accurate description. Yes.
So Jeff, looking at the agenda, though, I mean, it says meet with Francis Parisi about extending cell tower permits. So. Is that not? I mean, whether we do it or not, it seems like that describes what the intent of the discussion is.
It does. But are are the the neighbors, the parties in interest. Near there who were all noticed of the special permit public hearing the last time around. I mean, they're not. They're not out there following. Planning board meeting agendas. Unless they're complete nerds like some of us are, but. No, they're not paying any attention. And. You know, that was that was a two-year permit. Use it or lose it. And. I, you know. I just feel they were included the first time around and. I guess in general, when whenever it comes to to public notice, public participation. I would err on the side of more.
So are you suggesting, just to clarify that. Notice be sent to a butters, but that we don't have a public hearing, but it's notice of a public of a public meeting?
If Donna says we could do a hybrid like that.
I'm kind of. Curious as to what's the point? If you're inviting them and not allowing them to speak. And I don't think you're you need to invite them or allow them to speak.
They would definitely be allowed to speak and we would listen to them.
Or take away the formal.
That's a public hearing. That's a public hearing, then.
Yeah, you're right. You can call it a public meeting with public participation, or you can call it a public hearing.
So Donna, you were starting to say something.
Yeah, I think that, yes, you can do a hybrid. There's nothing in the statute that talks about the process. And so that I think you can develop one. If in fact you develop one, I would expect you to use it. You know, in the future, I wouldn't expect you to just develop it for this process. I would also point out that this is not. I mean, this is the permit that was before you. It's not like they can bring in. Additional height, additional anything of that sort without going back through the special permit process. This is the permit that was before you with the conditions that you put on it and just whether you're going to give them additional time. To build. That exact same. Structure, not to change it or add to it or anything of that nature. If in fact they want to make changes like that, then it needs to go back to a real public hearing. I don't think there's any doubt about that. Excuse me, and I just wouldn't want. A butters to get the impression. That if they come in and start talking against. Anything other than why there isn't good cause. That they really, they really don't have a say in, you know, they can't come in and make the arguments they may have made at the special permit hearing. On whether or not the tower should go up.
Right, there's only one issue. Is there a good cause?
Right, right, right.
And 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 they would be informed of that.
Right.
Okay, and there would be and and if we were to send out notice, notice to interested parties, there there are no legal requirements. In state law that govern how we do that.
No. No, but I would follow your standard process. I would just send letters to all of them saying that there'll be a public meeting and I would underline meeting. For an extension of the special permit, the bylaw says two years. And they couldn't. They've for good. They've argued for good cause. They need an extension for an additional year.
Well, one thing I would note is that is that we are planning on having another meeting on the 14th.
Hmm. Is that enough time?
Well, there isn't any time standard because we're not talking about. We're not talking about a special permit hearing where they have to get 14 days notice and it has to go in the paper 14 days and then seven, you know. We're not talking about that. We're just talking about basically informing people. That they've come in for this extension. And if they want to be heard, they should. You know, participate in this meeting.
How would you recommend that that be done by a letter, a short letter to each?
Yeah. Yeah.
And and interested parties would be identified how?
A butters.
A butters, okay.
Well, the same interested parties that were in that were noticed for the special permit.
Exactly. Right, the parties in interest should be more specific.
So since we're developing a process. Who would foot the bill for the. Noticing to the butters?
I would volunteer to pay for that.
There you go.
If it were necessary, I I'm going to confirm before we send them out and hopefully by tomorrow that. It's not necessary. Could I disagree with all of this discussion, but in the, you know, my disagreement doesn't forward the case. And I would rather. Pay a small fee to pay for the butter notices. I just I just want to confirm over the next 24 hours that it's necessary. And and if we have to, we'll send out a notice.
Well, it's not. We're not saying it's necessary. We're saying that's the planning board wants to make that process. And they have every right to determine their process. There's nothing in the statute that says how that goes, so they get to make their own process.
I guess I respectfully agree with that, yes.
But but that's just so far, that's just me talking. So I guess I will make a motion that that's what we do. In this case. That we have a a a meeting to to discuss the. The avoidance of lapse of this permit and some extension period of time to be noticed to the original. Parties in interest. With the applicant paying for such notice by mail. And that's the way we proceed. So. If I got a second and if the board votes for that, then that's the way we'll do it. Otherwise, we won't do it that way.
Robert seconds.
Okay. More discussion on this?
I just had a just a timing clarification. So. If we're planning on June 14th, I understand that we would do that. Because that would be the last meeting date prior to the two-year clock lapsing. But when we started out the conversation, there was this whole tolling concept. And so. If tolling is in place legitimate, which none of. if tolling is in place legitimate, which none of us can confirm at the moment, then we wouldn't necessarily have to do it on June fourteenth, because it seems like it would be extended beyond that date. But that's an unknown at this point, correct? Donna.
Seems to be an unknown.
Is the the tolling dates from the two years, so it was granted in June two years ago exactly?
It's it's a um the tolling timeframe is from the state of emergency, which
I know, I know, I know. I I mean, I get that. Um but the question becomes whether or not that two years told if it fell before March twenty twenty, when the permitting extensions were all put in and the toll lapsed after December first, when all of those extensions were taken away. So I'm of the opinion that and and I'm have to re, I have to read chapter. It's chapter fifty two or nine, chapter ninety four of the Acts of twenty twenty. I can't remember which. It's just gonna have to be read, but I think because the permit was granted in June of twenty nineteen and all extensions ended December first twenty twenty, that this permit didn't fall within either of those dates. So I'm not sure it has protection under the statute. And the statute is gonna have to be read very carefully to make that.
I'd love to talk about this with you offline. And the reason is is because if you look at, they amended the emergency declaration uh to put some December dates in. You're absolutely right. But what those actually did was put dates uh with the December first date on you guys to do your role as planning board. Before you had a cart lunch, we didn't have to do anything. We don't have to look at anything. We don't have any statutory just um uh limits. We don't have to convene public meetings. We don't have to issue decisions. And because of that, folks on my side of the table said, no, we've got to have an end date to that. So the state ended that in December. But what they didn't do is extend my dates to exercise my permits. And I've looked at this very carefully. And I'd I'd encourage you to do it as well, um to just make sure.
But I don't think, I think it's a moot point, because you're gonna come in on June fourteenth and ask for an extension. Extension, then it's not gonna matter. If you don't get the extension, then we'll be arguing about what the statute says.
I I agree with you. I think that's a a good observation, yes.
And I think seven days notice, um under these circumstances, because it's not a public hearing, we're not being doing a formal process under section eleven. You're basically just want to have at a public meeting the opportunity for the uh parties in interest to comment publicly. Then I think seven days notice is adequate. If you determine that that process that you've created now, you want to tweak, you can certainly do that. And I'm sure Michael will draft up a formal process. I have no doubt.
Thank you, Donna.
So I I actually personally agree with all that. I I think that's a good plan.
There is a hand raised in the audience and just uh because I'm taking minutes, I would recommend the public, if they have a comment, would unmute themselves instead of using the hand function. Thank you.
Tessa, I can, I'm I'm been on for a little while. I've been late to the meeting, but I can help out if you want with that.
Thank you.
So uh this is Penny Jakes. I'm just unmuted myself. I had my hand up. I have a question for Mister, excuse me if I mispronounce it, Parisi.
Yep, you got it right.
So as I recall, one of the conditions of the special permit for this project was that you needed to have a I'm not sure the right term carrier um to move forward. Do you have one now?
We do not have a sign. We're in negotiations with a couple and that's still a condition. I'm not asking to modify that condition. But uh that's still a condition out there, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I I believe we have a motion before us. I mean, and and a second. Um should should we repeat the motion?
Only Tessa has it. I think it was, it was fairly uh verbose.
All right, I'll give my best shot, Jeff. Um so what I have is that Jeff made a motion at six fifty seven to for a meeting to avoid the lapse of the special permit. And I would put in the details of what the of the name of the Vertex Tower, Cell Tower Special Permit. Um and to give notice to parties of interest as just as were notified during the special permit hearing, original special permit hearing.
And uh it was at the and the notice is at the expense of the applicant. Now, I noted that that Francis mentioned sending out the notices himself. Normally, the the planning board does that. Donna.
Yeah, the I mean, the law is very clear when you're getting, I mean, it's it the law is applicable to um public hearings. But I would think you'd get the same ruling out of the court. You're responsible for sending out the notices.
The planning board. Yeah, that's.
Well, the town, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So are we ready to vote? I mean, does anybody want to say more? Uh I'll call the roll. Um Michael.
Hi.
Nathan.
Hi.
Linda.
I.
Robert. Steve.
Hi.
And Jeff.
Hi.
I'm an I too, so.
Perfect.
Okay, so we have to get the notice drafted. You know, a little little one pager there. Is is that something that's gonna fall to our clerk perhaps, or how's that gonna be done? Does it have to be done pretty quick if we only have twelve days?
And also in terms of procedure, I'm not sure how to get the applicant pay for it if I'm the one sending it out.
We just bill them.
It's it's no different than any other public notice. We figure out how much we have on a Butters list from three years ago. We need to update that quickly. Uh two years ago, we update that quickly and whatever the certified notice is, it's no different than any other public hearing that you do. And then you ask me for a check and I'll mail it to you or bring it to the public hearing.
This is not a certified notice, is it? I mean, we're not.
No, it's more informal. Yeah.
Yeah, and it just seems like it's just going to the Butters. It's not going to the newspaper.
Correct.
I think it's usually the newspaper that gets reimbursed. I'm not sure.
Well, all expenses get reimbursed, but you're right. We're now talking about ten of Butters, four dollars and ninety cents or something rather than necessarily mean that would be the case for other of um ex request for extensions in this process. So I still think you just basically do your notices, mail them out and ask for reimbursement for the out of pocket money for the town.
Yeah. I mean, and that would.
Probably not gonna be a lot of money, but that's the process.
And that would include the the planning boards of the abutting towns too.
Right, always did.
Yeah, yeah. And I I think and I think to answer Jeff's question, I mean, since it's not a a formal public hearing, whatever is written is it's a little lower stakes.
I'll work it out with Tessa tomorrow. There will be a problem.
Thank you.
Great.
All right, I'm gonna sign off. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
We're good. Thank you for coming, Francis.
Good night.
Night.
Okay. So um we can move on to public comment now. I would note also that um we've had an unexpected cancellation, so we may be able to, we may be able to give the historical commission some some more time than we expected tonight. I mean, is there public comment on on issues uh other than the historical commission or the amendments? Hearing none, I'll uh I'll call on Miriam.
Yeah, I'm glad Donna's here. Is she still here? Donna? Good Donna, oh, she's still here. So um um just to follow up on the discussion about a protocol uh for managing um the review of any historical data and mitigation plans um for the solar projects. You know, I'm curious, Donna, you and I had an email exchange because um she, and I'm I'm speaking for you. So correct me if I got it wrong, but uh that we were talking about the different authorizations in state law for going into executive session to review data and it's pretty clear that the historical commission has the authority to decide that something needs to be reviewed in executive session um and to keep it out of the public record. Donna, you were referencing a law that would, a statute that would um give the same authority to the planning board. But it was, it appeared to me that it was dependent on a decision from the state archaeologist about whether or not something met the um state's definition of a site or specimen um as opposed to the planning board or the historical commission's designation. And is that correct?
I think that's probably accurate. I mean, understand, under the open meeting law, that statute, um that section that says you can go into executive session doesn't um specify that it has to be a statute that gives the body the right to go into executive session. For instance, um if I was going to there was gonna be a discussion about patient-client privilege that contained that. That could be an executive session because there's a statute that says that's privileged confidential. So I think that there's certainly sufficient um statutory and public policy that talks about these sites being kept confidential that would give any board that could do their work and still keep them somewhat confidential the right to do that. And I, you know, if the open meeting law was challenged, I really don't think the division of open government would say no, you're wrong. All of these archaeological sites have to be published specifically and everybody has to know where they are. Just don't think it would happen.
All right, so it doesn't matter either way, except that I think that the plan still remains that um well, we had a historical commission meeting last week and um there were AMP representatives at that meeting. Andrew Chabot, who's here tonight, uh was at that meeting and we talked about our reviewing data in an executive session. Possibly with the researchers working for AMP as well as perhaps ideally a tribal historic preservation officer. At least one to consult with us. Um so I guess one of the questions would be would that be separate from the executive session that the planning board would go into? Can we do it jointly?
I mean, I I think you have to think about the process. I think the historical commission and the work you're doing with the tribal preservation officers and the work you're doing around these sites, you're essentially doing that work so that when the developer writes you and says and you know, says we need to know if you know of any cultural sites and our landscapes on this property, that they go back to the planning board and say the historical commission doesn't have anything. The historical commission does have information that we need to provide. And so that's the whole point of that process within the solar bylaw. Then I think once that answer gets to the planning board, then the planning board's going to look and see um and determine what they think should be on the plans relative to the opinion you gave them, the opinion the tribal counts off of um tippos gave them. If the tippos are working with you and so that 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 is the response from the tippos is included in yours, that's a great thing. But there's all those other tribal representatives and other people referenced in the statute that need to be contacted and need to get in opinions.
I think that we were viewing it a little differently um that um consulting in executive session and reviewing the data would not be simply for us to give AMP information, but that we would be having a conversation and discussion about how whether or not we have any opinions or findings about AMP's data and their mitigation plan and that we would give written findings to the planning board about our opinion about the mitigation plan and that.
I think that's fine. I think that's all part of it.
Probably want to do some site visits as well um with the researchers. So that it that's a more of a two-way consultation process. Somebody else, correct me if I'm wrong here. There's a couple other historical commissioners here.
Consultation process with who?
With AMP and with the researchers.
Well, I think that's AMP's choice. I don't think there's anything in the bylaw that requires the developer to do that. I think a smart developer would because they're going to get that, that opinion's going to go or that report's gonna go to the planning board. And if they haven't cooperated and if they don't have sort of a concurrence of what where the sites are, a concurrence of mitigation, then that's gonna be battled out at the planning board. So obviously a developer working with the, but there's no requirement that they work with you. That's their choice. And you know, as I said, I think a smart developer will, but there may be some that won't. And then the planning board's gonna take your report and say, we don't agree developer with the site you have. We think there's more. You know, the planning board's reported that there's more. The planning board reported that these should be mitigation measures. The developer says we don't want to do those mitigation measures. They're gonna you know, reduce our profit or whatever, and that'll be battled out at the planning board.
So Donna, can I ask you a question? Just it's somewhat confusing, but thinking about it from the planning board side. So the historical commission will do all this pre-work and bring forth opinions that they can articulate and it also would be in written documents. And so is the question at hand in terms of process that at the point at which the historical commission is ready to tell the planning board what it thinks or what it found or all that stuff, that we can jointly go into executive session? And also, if there's a written document, if that's confidential, how does how does that get transferred so it's not a public document?
I I think that you can make that confidential and go into executive session for the historical commission's report. Now, obviously, at some point, the plans, if there are sites and if there's going to be mitigation, no panels around those sites, um whatever, then obviously you know, those those sites are gonna be known. People understand when they look at a solar field and see cutouts, you know, that it's either slope or it's a site or, you know, it's something else. Though because they wouldn't develop it and just cut those out normally. But that doesn't mean that what's there, the extent of what's there, um the exact location within the cutout, all of that, or the report from the historical commission saying exactly what it is. You know, any of that stuff necessarily needs to be public. I think those are the things that you can keep somewhat confidential. And if the planning board wants to go and look at those things, obviously a site visit is not part of a public meeting. So they can go out and do that without having to worry about executive session um and confirm for themselves. But I think that the point is, is that the way the solar bylaws written is the developer is tasked with going to these various, very specific groups and getting their that group's opinion on what is on the ground where they want to develop. And then I think all of you have some flexibility in how you're going to proceed around that. If it's cooperative developer, I think the process Mir- Miriam has like you know, laid out is great. Then in fact, they can get a lot of work done at the historical commission and sort of prevent an effect complete to you where you don't have to worry. They've drawn out the plans. They've drawn out where they're not gonna develop and I'm simplifying it, but you know, and and so there's no conflict. Other times, there is gonna be conflict. And then the And then the Planning Board's going to have to go out and see and make their own determination on how they're going to proceed with whether or not it's a site, whether or not it needs to be mitigated, how it needs to be mitigated. You know, and so hopefully over, in most of these cases, it will be cooperative and it will work. When it doesn't, then it's, it's going to be part of the public hearing process.
Thank you.
Henry, did you have any comments?
No, I I defer to the, again, our, we are in an advisory capacity, my understanding. And that's what Donna's saying. And I'm not sure what else we could do to, to have, you know, whatever analysis or data we have to, to force the issue is, unless there's something I'm missing here.
Well, in some regards, we won't know until we get there. I mean, you guys do all the prep work and then we'll have to figure out if, if it's sufficient or not sufficient, if it's agreed upon, if it's conflicting.
You know, I, I think the important thing is, is that the things that the Historic Commission, the Tipo, the applicant's researcher, whatever, agree on and wish to buffer and, and protect are probably fine with the Planning Board. It's just, if there's pushback in this agreement, then we have to ultimately make some kind of decision. And, and we need to see it. We need to be able to know about it and and see it and decide. And I, I just want to preserve that ability.
And, and I don't know if each of those different groups are all going to agree. I mean, the way the bylaw is written is it goes to the Historical Commission, it goes to Mass Historical, it goes to tribal leaders of tribes that have any relationship to the Chutesbury area, it goes to tippos. I mean, I don't know that the Historical Commission is working with all of those different groups to come up with one major recommendation, or whether you're going to have a recommendation from the Historical Commission and some of those groups they've worked with, recommendations from others of those groups that don't necessarily agree with the Historical Commission. I mean, I think most of the time, it's going to be pretty cohesive and it's going to work, but not always.
Yep. Well, it's probably an instance where the applicant pushes back that the Planning Board has to step in and make some type of determination.
Well, and I don't know if all, all of the different tribal groups are going to agree on everything. I mean, maybe they will, but that seems, you know, sort of an assumption to say that they're all just going to agree and, you know.
How many tribal groups are we going to have? Is it going to be like?
I don't know how many, the bylaw says any tribal groups that had any association with the Chutesbury area. I mean, that could be a huge group from my understanding.
So that's up to the applicants to identify those tribes and, and consult with them.
That's what the, that's what the bylaw says, and there may be agreement or disagreement even on that scale.
Well, I just want to say thank you to the Historical Commission for doing some of this thinking. It's, it's a lot of work to figure this out, but I think the prep work is, would be really helpful.
Have we beaten this one to death yet? I, I hear a lapse in the conversation, but.
We're still in, we're still in public comment, right? Or, or did we go over to Historic Commission?
Well, there, there, well, when I asked for public comment, I didn't hear any and we moved on to the Historical Commission.
Okay. Can we, can we slip minutes in between now and 7:30?
I like the way you think. I think that's, that's where I was headed. I did have one comment on the, on the 4:26 minutes. At, at the top of the page three, in the discussion of driveway length, it says a variance is possible from the board. I'm, my understanding was that a variance on the driveway length would have to be from the ZBA.
Correct.
So.
Thank you. I will make that correction.
So Deacon, you were talking about the April 26
Yes.
minutes. You want to, should we move and discuss that? And then I have a question for Tessa.
We should move along to that and, and be prepared to, to be incomplete and so we can start the hearing at 7:30.
Yep.
Okay. I'll move to approve the minutes of April 26, 2021.
Checking.
Okay. And that's, and that's with the, with the amendment that I made?
Well, you didn't say that, but it should be.
Yeah. So Tessa, I have a question for you. Since I sent you all those edits, I don't know if you have time to go through that. You wanted me to share a screen?
I was just thinking that I should share host duties with you so that can happen. I just have to find you in the list.
Okay.
Yeah, that should work.
Okay, let's see. What I'm just gonna, I thought I had it queued up.
They sent it out earlier this morning.
Yeah, no, no, I, I got it. I just wasn't over here. There you go. Everyone see that?
Yeah, can you make, can you make it any bigger?
Of course. That might be too big.
No, it's never too big.
Okay. So this is, this is correct one, right, Tessa? So I took, there's Michael Pill's name just should get corrected. I just clarified this a little bit. So it said, the Historical Commission would like to set up a process of discussion of how to withhold information regarding sensitive areas proposed to the Planning Board in advance of any special permit applications. Just making it a little bit more specific to what that was about. I just took that out because it says when it, when Michael sent out this thing. And then I clarified this just to make it really clear, since this is, I think, factual information that would be helpful that, you know, we had this conversation that East Long Meadow got their permit, their solar permit pushed back because it was only 11%. And Wall Sam, I think it was 8%, and Chutesbury, as Jeff pointed out, allows for 80% of the town. So I think that, I just wanted to clarify that.
Wall Sam was like 1.1.7 or 1.9%.
It was that little? I thought it was eight, but.
That was the Tracer Lane case?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That was, that was under 2%.
Okay.
It looks like there's a little bit of a grammatical issue with the 80% of the town than East Long Meadow.
Uh, Chutesbury allows, but. How about this?
Rather than, you know, where, the, something, yeah, okay.
Okay.
And then it looks like, there you go.
Okay, cool. And then I just, down here, this portion of the conversation is relevant. The Select Board, just as Takeare indicated that this portion, just to clarify, I'm not sure why I put that in, but it was a while ago. And this was for the, the amendments. Just making it a little clearer in terms of what the process was, that it went to the Select Board, they returned it back to us, allowing for a public hearing. So as opposed to just emailing, it didn't really describe what the process was. And making it a little more clear there, just about the, the process in terms of these amendments we'll be discussing.
I think, and, and returned back by?
Am I good to move on?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's supposed to be June 12?
This? I think it was, I think we were originally looking at a different date. Oh, you're right. Before the June 12th, correct. Good catch. And I just flipped this because it seemed, it makes, it makes sense that it's two weeks away and then one week away, it just read weird. So I don't know. That was just my, I don't usually care about that stuff. And then this was discussion about the DOER report. I just, right here, I basically says AMP's energy idea of a public entity is, it is new, but it's, it's different, which I think is more important. It's a different kind of approach. And just clarify a little, so it made sense. And then an open, we had an open meeting law discussion and oh yeah, so this is a little bit more extensive. It's sort of, I copied in what I had shared with the Planning Board in some previous email, just to sort of have it be more specific, since it seemed like we wanted to document what that conversation is and have it be clear. So if you ever want to reference it, we can go back to it. So we've all, you could read it here, but in some previous email, this is what I wrote up for you guys.
So, so these amendments have already been, have already been added to the minutes that Tessa sent out, because I remember reading these same sentences that you.
Oh, that's right. So, so maybe we just didn't approve it last time. Maybe that was it. I don't remember. I just remember, I got them this morning and I thought I had to go through them again. So Tessa.
There was not a vote to approve these edits.
We didn't have, I forgot to.
So it's, so it's good to review the edits then?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay.
So now we've had discussion and, you know, it's kind of like, we have the motion as amended by the on-screen edits. Is that fair?
Yeah, I've always done it as approve the minutes as amended. So are we ready to vote? I'll, I'll, I'll call on the members. Michael?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Steve? I didn't hear him.
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
And Robert?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Good. It's 7:32. I think we should, I think we should move on to the hearing. I'd like to ask Donna, do I need to read the governor's notice again?
No. Well, yeah, go, well, go ahead, read it. Sorry. Maybe the last time.
I hope so. I hope so. Following the governor's restrictions on public hearings, this meeting is being held virtually using zoom.com for remote participation. Public may access it following the instructions on, on this meeting's agenda posted on the town calendar. If despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide real-time access, the public can request a recording of this meeting by contacting clerk. Great.
And I would just make a comment because I was taking minutes. If you are, feel comfortable putting your last name in, on your heading as participant, that would be helpful for me. Thank you.
Okay. So, so, so we're on to, so we're on to the, we're on to the two amendments of the public hearing. Why don't we do the, why don't we do the access one first? Do you want to lead that part, Jeff?
I'd be happy to. Can Tessa or can I share a screen that has that, has that amendment? I have it.
Let me co-host you. One moment.
Okay.
To be all set.
That's another byproduct of Zoom. Now you're co-hosting people as a verb.
Owner status, free agent drive.
I got it, Jeff, if you want.
Yeah, yeah, why, I'm not pointing it in here. Okay. Can you make it bigger as well so I can read my thing? Oh, good. Look at that. Okay. So, so this is just a little correction to our, to our zoning bylaw. And the, the reason we need this is because we have an unusual district in town, the Forest Conservation District. And unlike most other towns, our Forest Conservation District is landlocked. Nowhere does it touch a road. It's defined as being 500 feet back from, from the roads and it compromises, it comprises about 80% of the town. And there are always a district in front of it, like the Town Center District or the Lake Wayola District, or most often the roadside residential, which runs along roads. So you have to always go through these other districts to get to the Forest Conservation. And if you look through the use table, you will see some uses, maybe a half a dozen, including large-scale solar that are permissible by one means or another in the FC district, but not allowed at all in the districts in between the FC and the road. The, the problem with that is that under most zoning law, including case law in Massachusetts, the access is the use. So a driveway or other, some other kind of accessway to get into the FC to do something that you are allowed to do in there is also considered the use. And if it goes through, say, the RR district, it would be prohibited. So you could have a use in the FC, but the only way you could get there is by helicopter. That was never the intent of our zoning bylaw. So what we've done is craft a little amendment to take care of that and it's section, it's a new section, 3.6. It's in a, it's in a good place in our zoning bylaw. It has to do with the has to do with the uses. And it says, access, including for a pertinent facilities and utilities from public ways across other districts to the FC districts for an allowable use in the FC district shall be permitted under the same terms as the use and has a single unified permit application. So if you're doing something in the FC, the driveway that will get you there is included in that permit and is also permitted under the same term. And if you go down here, I don't know whether I need to read all these things, but these are three paragraphs of explanation. We've tried to get this around as much as possible, but three paragraphs of explanation about.
Excuse me, Jeff, Jeff, this is Miriam. There's, somebody's not on mute and there's a lot of background noise. I'm finding it hard to hear. I don't know who that could be.
Okay, I hear it too.
Me too.
Anyway. Anyway, that's about it. This was, this came to our attention because it was brought to our attention by AMP. And it, it was, it was something that, that we didn't realize, but that, that we do need to correct. And it, and it's not, it's not pro or anti-solar. It has nothing to do with solar. It's just good. It, it's not pro or anti solar. It has nothing to do with solar. It's just good zoning. And if we, frankly, if we ever tried to prevent a solar development because of this technicality, we, we would lose so fast it would make our head spin. So. Not worth keeping it. Best to clear up the problem. So that's what we've done here.
Jeff, can I add, add one more thing just for clarification? This is, this is a change in our zoning bylaw. It's not a change in the solar bylaw, just to underscore what Jeff was just saying. This is, this is, so it affects anything. But it's a zoning bylaw change.
Yep. And Jeff, just again, for clarification, this does not affect the 1,000 foot limitation, which is also in our zoning bylaws, not our solar bylaw. This has, it has no impact on that, correct?
That's correct. Yep. That still stands.
So Jeff, do you think, do you think we should listen to the public now?
Absolutely. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question.
Please.
Don Wackelup, 215 Leverett Road, write-in candidate for the select board. I, I would like to say right now that I endorse this amendment exactly the way you have written it. I'm a little concerned about the, the driveway and accessing conservation forests, but I stated that in prior meetings, what my concerns were, and I. Trust that you guys can handle the mission. I, my concern, I think really is about public. Reception about accessing conservation forest for development purposes. This is a switch of use of zoning. I'm not sure how to ask the question. When conservation forest that's been under 61A is switched to light industry, is there a fine for that?
There's a rollback, there's a rollback fee when, when the, when the property is removed from chapter 61. I mean, it's very, it's a very minor fee. It, you know, it's not much money.
Deacon, doesn't it require just paying the back taxes on that chapter 61 land? That, how long it's been?
It's, it's a very limited payment. I mean, it, it really is, it, it's fairly trivial. I don't remember exactly how it's calculated, but. There is a rollback.
I mean, something to do with a time period?
It does. If it, it's a, chapter 61A actually lasts for 10 years or texture 61B, I think is, is the forestry.
Just 61 is the.
1A is agriculture because that, and then texture 61B, it's a 10, I believe it's a 10 year period. So if you change use after, in a, in turn between that 10 period, year period, then you don't have to pay back taxes. Is my understanding.
Thank you, Tessa.
Anybody else want to speak to the, to the access amendment? This is as uncontroversial as I had hoped for. This is good. Should, should we move on to the, I'll move, move us along to the associate member amendment unless somebody wants to speak. You want to, you want to do the associate member amendment, Michael?
Sure. Let me get it up on the screen here. Deacon, why don't you just give people the opportunity to comment more on the access one later if something occurs to them?
Absolutely. And Donna's got her hand up too.
No, I was just going to say, if you, if you're, you're not going to take any further comments, you might as well vote, you know, your report on each section, but if you're going to take more comments later, then I definitely wouldn't do that.
Okay. So. Everyone can see this?
Yeah, but Michael, before Jeff asks, just blow it up.
How's that? That's probably pretty good. That's too big for me though. Here we go. Okay. So. The associate, this is about associate members. And the impetus for this was. I think even before I was on the planning board, I would hear Deacon worrying about if, if there is a public hearing that took a long time, that through attrition. People not being able to make meetings, et cetera, that. You, we wouldn't be able to get the necessary quorum. So it's, it's been an ongoing issue, but with the. Impending. Five solar proposals that were out there, we thought that we, this was the time to address it. And basically. This creates a bench of potential planning board people who can step in if people are, who are elected members can participate in some form or another. So that's sort of the background behind it. There's two little bits. So section 93B currently. References, it, it's in there and I'll read it to you. Oh. I'm, hold on one sec. I apologize. 9.3. B. Oh. My hard copy is not the same thing. Anyway, it references, here we go, references to alternates as elected. And so alternates are not really what's the term that's designated in state statute that allows for associate members, of course, the alternates. And. One, a town has the ability to either have elected associates or appointed associates, and we decided that we wanted to have appointed. So basically we're removing the existing 9, 9.3B and replacing it with a new section with this 10.3. And that's in the section that's administration and enforcement. So taking out one that is not quite accurate and is very short and not what we wanted and replacing it with something that is more expansive and more accurate to what we want. So walking through. You're allowed, if you have a seven member board, to have up to two associate members. So we're planning to have, and statute is check, chapter 40A, section nine. So we're. Recommending having two associate members on the planning board. The appointments can occur at any time. And the, the planning board will notify the select board in writing if its intention to begin an associate member appointment. So that's, the select board is aware of that. The planning board will establish the process for soliciting and receiving names of interested individuals with notice being made broadly to residents of Shutsbury. One thing that was important is that since the planning board is an elected body, we wanted to make sure that individuals who were associate members. Met that same bar and said they would have to be registered voters in the town of Shutsbury. In some committees, you don't have to be part of. The town as a resident even, and other people don't have to be registered, but in this case, we want associates to be registered voters of Shutsbury. In terms of the process. The way it works for appointments is that committees usually make appointments and then the select board is involved in the elections. In the, in the actual, the, the plan board makes the recommendation and the select board is part of the process for doing the appointment. What we're recommending is replicating the state process for vacancy. And so the planning board would make a recommendation for appointment and then in a joint meeting at the planning board, the select board. The majority of members in attendance would vote on appointments. So that would be the process. The term would be for one year. Any mid-year appointments would run through June 30th to the end of the fiscal year and renewals would. Follow in the same way that associate members would have their term renewed by a majority of members of the planning board and the select board at the end of the year appointment. So the select board meets annually at the end of the year to do all the appointments for committees and we would just come together if. For that process. So it'd probably be just an agenda item and part of that meeting. And there's no limit to renewals. So that's sort of the process for how they get there, the, the substance of what happens. Once there are people who are associate members is the chair would designate one or two members to participate as an acting member of the planning board. And they would do so in the case of absence, inability to act, conflict of interests on the part of any planning board member, or the event of a vacancy on the board. So if there's an open spot, basically the chair would be able to designate one or two people to fill that spot on a temporary basis. It would be time limited or purpose limited. So it would have to be articulated by the chair. What the purpose or the time is, and that can be extended by the chair if, for, there's a reason to do that. When an associate member is designated to participate fully, they can participate fully in special permit, site plan, review, other applications for the planning board. As well as procedural matters designated by the chair included, but not limited to hearings of the planning board. And then in terms of our expectations as the planning board, it would be that they would attend meetings regularly. They would be able to sit with the planning board, receive communications so they can stay up to speed on what the issues were. They could participate in deliberation. When not acting as a full member of the board, they could not participate or vote in the executive sessions. And then vacancies for unexpired associate member terms would be filled in the same manner as the original. So that's the entirety of what we develop for associate members. And if approved by town meeting, I think we would probably start this process, you know, if not December and the fall to, you know, look for people who are interested. So. Deacon, you want me to leave this up or take it down?
I, I think if you, if you were to take it down, I could, I could see people raising their hands.
Okay. There you go. Done.
So as, as the amendment reads right now, I would feel compelled at town meeting to introduce an amendment. That would remove this clause that says that the select board participate in the appointing process with the planning board. But. I also see it's necessary to have a member, at least one member of the select board participate in the process with the planning board to appoint these members. How will you guard against loading of the board with pro-solar or for that matter, anti-solar candidates?
Well, want me to answer that?
Well, I, I just, I want you to know that I'm referring to what Donna said earlier, that the planning board has the ability to select its own process.
Right. Yeah, I was, I was actually asking Deacon, but I'm, I'm happy to answer it. I think, so aside from the solar issue, just putting it aside for a second. We had a lot of the conversation about, you know, what's, what statute says is. A town can figure out what process you, it wants to take for, so to fill associate member slots. So unlike a lot of things where statute says you have to do it this way, it was really. Up to us. And so we had a couple of meetings where we discussed it. There were a couple of routes where one could do. So if there's a vacancy on, on an elected. Body, so committee or board like this, like the planning board, the state mandated process is that this, in this, the planning board and the select board get together jointly. And then they vote on a person. So that's how, that's how Nathan got onto the, the planning board. We had that process. I don't know, six months ago or so. And so that's one route that you could replicate the processes that's articulated for vacancies. Another way that we discussed was that it was just the planning board who could do the appointment. What we decided after discussing is that we went to the select board and basically said, you have thoughts. Originally we came up with a little bit of a hybrid, make everyone happy. Approach that Donna quickly shot down because you have to, as she said, you have to have it one way or the other. You can't do this hybrid conditional kind of thing. So it really was trying to figure out a process. What we ended up and what's our, what's written here really reflects the process that. All committees in town have because most committees are appointed. You know, so it's, if it's an elected, you know, the electorate votes for those people, but if it's appointed. The committees, as you know, make the recommendations and in most situations, the select board then does the appointment of that recommendation, but as we discovered, not always. So in this case, what we're doing is replicating that where the planning board would articulate the process in terms of solicitation, receiving names, and then we would vote as a body to make a recommendation to the select board. And then both bodies would come together and vote on the actual appointment. So that's sort of, that's how we got to this. It was sort of a negotiated picking, figuring out, you know, what makes sense and can you build on existing processes? In terms of the solar issue, and I think for any issue of, you know, if there was a cell tower issue or, you know, something else issue down the road, it's hard to say. Which body would have an opinion, you know, like, I mean, some people would want. The select board to have one opinion, the planning board to have another. I think just numerically, it's, it's worth noting that the planning board will all, you know, if everyone showed up from the select board and everyone showed up from the planning board, it'd be seven votes for the planning board. And three votes for the select board. It's not the two bodies voting as bodies. It's the two bodies voting is the number of individuals who are in the room.
And my, and Michael, it's a simple majority.
Correct. Yeah.
Wired.
Yeah. So that.
Again, I, I guess I would ask Donna then, is there somewhere in writing that says that it has to be a quorum of the select board? Or can it be a representative of the select board, one member?
Um, as Michael said, for filling of vacancies for elected positions, it's very clear it's the select board, not a representative. And the select board is really the body that has the power to appoint.
Yes, I'm familiar with that.
You know, and so the bottom line is, is that I think that if you look at the number of members on most boards outside of the Z B A, which is three. On the planning board, seven, con comms at least five, you know, so the truth of the matter is, is that. A joint group of the board, both boards or the commission and the board, whatever it is. Picking a member basically lends itself to the board that's getting the member being able to have a fairly strong. Influence on who's going to join them. But I think that the statute and the public policy behind the elected official appointment is that it's still the authority of the select board to appoint. And you don't want to completely take that power away from the select board because as the public policy, they're the chief executive officer of the town and the appointing authority.
I think the planning board has a lot of influence here because we, we bring the, the candidates forward. The only candidates that can be considered are ones that we bring forward. I believe that's the way it's written.
Yeah.
And then when it finally comes down to voting, we have more members. So. Like advantage planning board, I guess.
And, and I would note that when, when Nathan, when Nathan was appointed to fill a vacancy. The planning board did not make a recommendation. The planning board, the planning board put forward the, the names of all the people who had, who had expressed willingness. And there were, and there were two rounds of voting in order to get a majority. It was. It seemed to work fine.
Right. And I think to that point, Don, you know, it's, it's not written in here what the process is. It just says that third paragraph. The planning board will establish the process for soliciting, receiving names, and then we'll make recommendations. So the planning board, you know, it'd be good to have a consistent practice, but it doesn't articulate what that practice has to be.
Okay. Thank you for answering the question. I appreciate it.
I'm sorry, your name's not showing on my screen, but you're, I see your hand. Okay.
Yeah, Ken Holt, 75 Montague Road. I'm going to butter to the. To the Leverett proposal, proposal and a, I'm downstream of the. Of the Carver Road proposal. So I kind of have a conflict of interest. I'm downstream of the, of the Carver Road proposal, so I kind of have a conflict of interest. So, I look back at the minutes, the last three sets of minutes, I didn't have time to go any further back. But the, it seems to me that the, there has been a full board on each of those three meetings. And if I look back at the, the earlier one, the first one, a lot of the discussion was around. Conflict of interest and a butters to the. Proposal from AMP and CAUS. Is that correct?
That is correct. Those are the, those are the, those are the kinds of problems that this amendment is designed to take care of.
Okay, so, so he, here's my take on this. I would be shocked if there was not anyone on that board. That doesn't have a conflict of interest. Whether you, whether you want your taxes to be cheaper, let's approve it, or want your taxes to be cheaper. Less, I should say, or whether you think your water is, is gonna get polluted or whether we. You, you think we don't know enough to approve of anything at this point, that we have no plan. So it would seem that, you know, certain people will recuse themselves. But not everybody's going to, so how do we know that, that, and I, you know, with all due respect to the board. That, that people are being honest, that, that they are, you know, that they are truly. Not on one side or the other, so that, so that's one question. So. So then the next question is, how do we know that these associates don't have a conflict of interest too? That they may, they may volunteer because they want to have their say to support their point of view. And then the third thing is about how this whole associate hiring takes place. You know, in Chutesbury, we vote on who gets to, onto the boards. And we have our, in, we, we, we get people on the, we want people on those boards who support our point of view. From my, from my perspective, it doesn't matter where that conflict of interest comes. Whether you're in a butter, whether it, whatever your support is. We have the right to make those decisions and it should not rest on the planning board. Because that, because the planning board. With all due respect, could be biased in one, one direction or another. Why would we not vote? In town meeting on associates? If they're going to have the full power of a member of playing board member, why do we not have that capability?
Donna.
Yeah, um, I mean, those are great questions, Ken, but I think you guys, you have to start. By understanding that conflict of interest is a legal term. You were absolutely right when you used the word bias as opposed to conflict of interest. Most people have biases one way or the other for projects or not. They're not living in a vacuum. Conflict of interest is very, very established under chapter two sixty-eight A. Which is a conflict of interest statute and makes it very clear that a conflict of interest. Is a direct or indirect financial interest. In a project and that you have a decision-making role in. Or you're a member of your family, immediate family does, and your immediate family is defined within the statute too is. Somebody correct me if I'm wrong, spouse, parents, in-laws, children, siblings. So, conflict of interest is, is a term of art and it's very specific and it's ruled by the conflict of interest statute. And those are the people that are required under the law to recuse themselves. Everybody else has a right to continue to participate whether they have a bias or not. Biases are not against the law, conflict of interests are.
So.
Go ahead.
So, I, I just want, I'm looking for a little bit of clarification, so a conflict of interest, say for example. I lose money on my house if I don't vote a certain way. Is that a conflict of interest?
Only if you're in a butter.
Only if I'm in a butter.
Right, because the, the way, the way the conflict of interest statute reads. Is that if you're, I shouldn't say just a butter, if you're a party in interest, which means you will butt. The property, the projects going on, you're across the street, you're within three hundred feet of the property line of the project. By definition, you have a conflict of interest.
Okay.
And the only way to get out of that is to get an appraisal of your prop, somebody to appraise your property. That says the value of your property will not go up or down. Because of the project, and that's the only way you can then vote on the project. If the appraisal comes in and says it will go up because of it, you have a conflict of interest. If it says it will go down because of it, you have a conflict of interest and then you have to recuse yourself. So that's by, all set by definition under chapter two sixty-eight A.
Clearly, I'm gonna have to read that chapter.
Read section twenty, cause that's the small town special municipal employee section.
But this is not, I mean, in, in my understanding of conflict of interest is it's not just a butters. You, you're talking about this specific case.
I'm talking about specifically when you're talking about value of real estate.
Okay.
But if you, if you had an interest in the developer. If you were a partner to the developer, if your sibling wasn't a partner to the developer. If your child was a partner to the developer, that would be a conflict of interest, regardless of whether you're in a butter or not. So it's really a direct or indirect financial interest, there's also in a section on appearance of conflict. That's much more vague and, and harder to determine, but the. The town has a little handout they give all public volunteers called summary of the conflict of interest statute. And that might be a good place to start, and that's just a public document at town hall. That the town clerk can get you, and that's a great place to start to begin to understand the statute.
There's also non-line test you can take, Ken, we all have to take a test every two years, so.
Uh, so just, just one more question, so in terms of. A conflict of interest again, let's say I have a conflict of interest, my taxes, I, I'm being promised. I'm not being promised, my taxes could go down if I was to vote for this project.
The statute's very clear that. Something that affects everybody in town like that is not a conflict of interest.
Okay.
So the statute's very clear that that kind of individual effect. On everybody or a majority of people in town does not constitute a conflict of interest. So that would not be a conflict of interest if it affected your taxes. The other thing that I, you pointed out that I think is a great question is why appointment. To the plan, the associate members to the planning board rather than elections and. What I've found over the years is twofold, one is that. Lots of times it's hard enough to get somebody to run for these boards, much less. To get seven members elected, plus then have two more slots to be elected. So, lots of times we err on, err on associate members being appointed. Just because it, a lot of people don't wanna go through the election process, they don't wanna. Spend the money rate, you know, basically go through the campaigning and whatnot, and so. Making sure that you have those associate members is important. The other thing about that is, of course, elections only happen once a year. And what could happen is somebody could step down from the board. Two weeks after the election. You have a seven-member board, you've got your two associate members and two weeks after the election, somebody steps down. That would essentially mean you'd either have to hold a special election, which no town's going to do because of the expense and the work of it. Or you'd have to wait to the next year before you even got that associate member, somebody to fill that slot. In small towns, conflicts come up all the time. We all, you know, serve, you serve on multiple boards, you volunteer. You know people in town, you have business relationships with them, you've got, you know, big swaths of property like. These proposals that have a gazillion of butters. If you don't have the ability to grab associate members, get them on the planning board. And get them in the, in a voting position if they're necessary. Then of course, the worst case scenario is you don't have enough members on the planning board to vote the permit. And if you don't have enough members on the planning board, then it could be constructively granted. If you have enough members on the planning board, but you lose two, then the decision has to be unanimous, so. In order to be fair to everybody, having those emergency members that can be appointed at any time. But having the safeguards of the planning board, vetting them, making sure they can work with the other seven members. Making sure that they've got qualifications, making sure that they have the ability to step in and do the work. Is why appointment really works better than election for two out, for two out of nine members. You're still going to have the elected members, the full-time members, those will be the people serving. But if an emergency arises, a conflict arises, then you have these appointed members that the chair can pull in. To sit on the board, so you don't have to worry about a constructive grant, you can have a full board, process is fair to everybody. And as I, as Michael provided, they're appointed every year. So if there's somebody that's really not working with the board, not showing up for meetings, not doing the work of the board. Then of course, the planning board chair can always say to the select board. We'd like to, we'd like this associate member appointed, that kind of thing. So there's just more flexibility with associate members that are appointed, not elected. And part of the reason you're doing this is for the flexibility.
Thanks, that's really helpful, so what, what is a quorum for the planning board?
Five, but you need five out of seven for a special permit, it's a super majority for a special permit. So it's three out of a three-member board, four out of a five-member board and two-thirds of a seven-member board.
Okay.
So, you ha, you have to have a super majority in order to grant these permits.
Thanks. Thank you.
On, on everything Donna said, we have. Was that, twelve, there's twelve. There's twelve, you know, twelve seats on the ballot for the June twelfth election in town. And of all of those, I believe only one of them is contested. In, in other words, only one of those out of twelve seats has more than one person running for the seat. And that includes people, the seat for the select board and the seat for the planning board. Are both, both have only one person on the ballot, given there is, we do have a write-in candidate for select board. So, that, that, that kind of highlights the difficulty of getting people on the volunteer boards.
I was just gonna jump in for you.
Miriam's had her hand up, Michael.
Okay, sorry.
Well, well, hold on here. Board members can speak before the public, I think.
Well, I'm really just asking Donna for a clarification of a word.
Go for it.
Donna, could you just explain, cause I don't know that everybody understands what you mean by constructively granting a permit?
Oh, sure, thanks. Basically, where constructive grant of a permit is means you don't have a quorum to have a hearing. And if your six, ninety days after your sixty-five days lapses. Without you making a decision, then the permit is constructively granted to the applicant so that they get the permit. So you wanna make sure that you have a full board that can attend all the public hearings and particularly for controversial projects. That means numerous hearings, everybody's got to attend, we have a rule where you can miss one meeting. Listen to all of the tapes and read all the minutes. And, and read all the documents that are submitted and still continue to participate, but if you miss two meetings. Then in fact, you can't, and so now you're down to six, something else, I mean, it's just can, it can get very dicey. Around making sure that you have enough people, particularly for these extended processes. That you go through for these hearings, and so having associate members. Somebody has somebody sick in their family and doesn't think they're gonna be able to do an extended hearing process. They can ask Deacon to pull in an associate member because they just can't handle the, the lengthy process. It gives you that flexibility and it's really important.
I mean, in, in Wheelock, we had two and a half years of, we had four or five hearings over two and a half years. I mean, the attendance became the biggest problem we had.
That's, and I was gonna sort of just speak to the constructive thing as well, Ken, I mean, I think. Your, your points and your questions are, are well taken, I think. The concern was, you know, when we started talking about this was maybe late fall. And we were anticipating five proposals at the same time or within lots of each other. That if you looked at Wheelock is, is what could be expected, that you would have to have enough attendance. Over say a year, year and a half process for five different hearings, cause they're not bundled, they're all treated separately. And so, and, you know, at the point that we started discussing it. I was recused, Deacon's gotta be recused for one, Nathan's recused for all of them. And so the fear was, you just hand over a special permit without doing any of the work. Just cause you, we don't have bodies in the room who can do it, so that was, that was, was a very logistical impetus of like. If nothing else, we should have enough people standing to actually perform the function of the planning board.
Yeah, if, if there's not enough board members to, to say yes or no, the answer is yes.
And without conditions.
Yes, exactly, as proposed.
Thank you, very helpful.
I'm not seeing any hands raised.
You have two screens here, is anybody else, let's see.
I see one.
Who? Oh, Leslie.
Thank you, um, and thank you, Ken, that was great to get the clarification, which, which reminds me of. Another possibility. And that is, I, I understand with the, with the five solar proposals. Maybe, maybe happening, maybe not happening. That more people, as I'm talking to more neighbors, might actually be really excited to be on the planning board now. And I, and I understand because Michael and Nathan and Deacon have to recluse himself.
I don't anymore.
Oh, good, 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 excellent.
I may not.
Okay, alright, yeah, great. I'm just wondering, you know, maybe something can be written up so that. If there is an opportunity to do an election, that there be an election as Ken is suggesting. And if there's no time for an election, then it'd be written up that, yes, you can go through with the way you wanna do this amendment. But going forward, perhaps, as, as, I mean, I think for myself, I'm more involved than ever. And I, and I'm speaking to dozens of neighbors who are more involved than ever. And I'm curious if it can be written up, like if something happens and there is time for an election. That we have one, and if there's no time for an election, then we go with this appointment process. So I, in other words, I want it all.
Right, so I'll just speak to that, cause Donna is gonna say it anyway, that, when I was saying that we tried to get. A win-win to make everyone happy and Donna said you have to have one way, you can't have a conditional. It was that kind of thing, we were trying to say, if this, then that, and if that, then this. And all, all these amendments have to go past the Attorney General's office and. What Donna said is basically they're, they're not gonna prove something that's, you know, conditional. So you sort of have to say, this is what we're proposing and this is what we voted on, and then they say yes or no. You know, the thing I would say though is, the, the place that we, that we got our pat on the back from Donna. Was where we said that the process and solicitation will be broad and notify the town. So, you know, that it's written in there that the intent is for these two positions to really let people know that it's there. So if people are wanting to participate, you know, that, that's, that's written in, that we have to make sure that it's not, you know. Tapping someone we know and saying, come to the meeting, but we know whether it's a town announcer, some way of getting the word out broadly. Did I say that all right, Donna?
Yes, so in other words, if, if we wanted to have it all, we would have to propose that for next year's town meeting. And for this year, either say yea or nay on this amendment.
No, but go ahead, Donna.
Yeah, Leslie, you can't have it all, no matter what, because the statute's very clear, you either make them elected or appointed.
Well, I'm talking about going forward, like.
No.
in twenty twenty-two, if we wanted to have it.
This, the statute that allows you to have associate members says you have to pick, they're either appointed or elected.
Right, but what about for the following year?
No, the statute, when you write
Forever.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
I get it seems like there's a little bit of, you know, wha- what Donna is saying is you can't ever have a situation where you know, you you have an election if you can, but if you can't, then you do an appointment. You know, the the planning board's position is that we want to be able to appoint people jointly with the select board so that we have the ability to meet the the needs of the town in terms of, you know, the planning board needs to be able to carry out its role as a special permit granting authority as provided for by the, you know, the general laws of the Commonwealth. Um, you know, we could choose to have them elected. And it, you know, if you went and uh, you know, brought this independently to town meeting, then town could vote on whether or not to, you know, to override what the planning board is proposing uh for this year. But it would have to be just elections. You wouldn't be able to have the conditional.
Thank you.
Lead us on, Mr. Chairman. I can hear my
Somebody else wants to speak. I mean, I'm I'm coming up empty.
I'm gonna nominate Donna to present present this at town meeting.
You did a fine job.
Oh, good. So
so so Donna.
Yes.
A quick question about the planning board report. The town meeting cannot vote on these things unless the planning board makes a a report within, I can't remember, it was two weeks or three weeks.
Twenty, they can't vote on it unless the planning board makes a report or twenty-one days have lapsed since the special since the hearing. And twenty-one days cannot lapse.
Okay, so we definitely have to do a report.
Correct.
What can the report be done orally at town meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
But but it'll be in the minutes. I mean, you want the report to be, you know.
Look, so we we have to vote on something tonight.
Right.
Our our acceptance is an endorsement of of these th- these two bylaw changes. And and then we report those results at at town meeting.
Right.
Right, okay. It seems like if, since we have time and since the report's not complex, just writing something up briefly and then putting it on the website would be helpful so that it's yet another document people can look at. So that people feel like they have, you know, time to, I mean, there's there's not much substance to what the report would be, but at least it's there um in advance as opposed to, because people would otherwise interpret it as like, we're springing the report at the last minute, when I think we intended to have this hearing with enough time that we wouldn't have to do the oral. So I'd I'd be fine writing it if if people want me to do that.
I I think the report for the access amendment is is essentially contained in those three paragraphs I added below the actual language itself. It's um it it explains why it's necessary. And and I think if we voted, that that would be the report. Those those paragraphs of explanation and endorsement and and just endorse that. And then put that forward as a report. Would that be all right, Donna?
Sure. And then Michael could write the report for the second one, you know, very similarly.
Yeah, because they both have descriptions. So and everyone everyone on the planning board's already read those.
Right, isn't that description essentially a report?
Yeah.
So for both, so we have it for both of them, though, the 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 description or rationale for the associate member is already written.
And and why you recommend or don't recommend it, obviously, you know. But that's the whole point of the report is whether the planning board recommends it or not. And I think the description explains, certainly for the access, explains why. I don't know if I ever got Michael's description.
I'll I'll send it to you later, but it's it's similar.
No, I'm I'm confident.
We have to remember this.
If you vote to recommend these changes and the reports explain why you think they're a good idea, that's it's done. And just putting it up on the website, I think Michael's right, so that people can read it and can read the explanations, may save some time at town meeting.
Mr. Chairman, are you ready for motions? Or are 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 we finished with the, are we, we have to close the hearing, right? Or something?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to close the hearing, yes.
Yeah. Let's do that.
Well, do we want? Oh, before, okay. Okay, so so we need to ta- so do we need, so we, at this point, we need a motion to close the meeting?
Uh, we have to do one at a time, right, separately?
Right, you don't want to close the meeting.
The hearing.
I misspoke, but I tried to correct myself.
Or you or you or you can vote during the hearing and then close the whole thing. It doesn't matter. There's no mandatory way.
Yeah.
I'll move to recommend.
I'll make a motion that we, I'll make a motion that we that we close the public hearing on the access amendment and that the planning board um vote to endorse that amendment and utilize the three paragraph description which appears below it as as our favorable report to town meeting.
Second.
Okay, uh discussion?
You don't have to break those two things up into two separate motions, what Jeff just said?
Well, I well, it doesn't cover the, it doesn't cover the, yeah, it doesn't. What Jeff's motion does not cover the um associate member amendment.
So then you probably do want to break up. You don't want to close the hearing on, close the public hearing.
Well, I I was just gonna close the public hearing on the access one. I think that's what I said, close the hearing.
Were they advertised separately, Jeff, or is one public hearing?
It was advertised as one hearing on two amendments.
Okay, then I'll withdraw the part about closing the hearing and retain the part about the um endorsement of the amendment.
And similarly, the three
Are you good, Tessa? Are you, are you good with the motion before?
Give me a moment to write down one.
Good.
I'll continue my second.
So it was endorsed um as access amendment was endorsed and utilized three paragraph description as favorably, as the favorable, as the favorable report to for the, I don't know, who do you send it to? To town meeting?
To town meeting, I guess, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, and so so Jeff has made the motion, Michael has seconded it. Any more discussion? I'll call the roll. Um, Michael?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Did I call on you, Steve?
Yes, yeah, but I don't get to go I twice, do I?
No, not this time. And and I'm an I, so I think we've got it. Okay, so um so let's have a motion on the associate member amendment.
Jeff, you want to do that one, too?
Sure, I move that the associate member amendment um as drafted be endorsed by the planning board and that Michael write a short report to that effect post haste that will um be on the website and available at at town meeting. Yeah.
Okay.
Something like that.
Second.
Okay. And you're good, Tessa? Okay, okay. And with unless somebody wants to say something more, I'll call the roll.
Well, well, we have the discussion first, but it but
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Roll if there's no more discussion.
Michael, didn't you already write a rationale for that associate?
Yeah, I think I would use that. The only thing I I think I might I think Ken jumped off, but I think I might add a sentence or two just to sort of underscore um the importance of the the flexibility with appointments as opposed to elections, sort of what Donna spoke to, because since it was raised in public hearing. I make.
Can it be appropriate for us to amend the motion to uh essentially include Michael's description and um uh more or less uh with some added emphasis on on why we want the power to appoint?
Either do you want to make a different motion?
I'll 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 add some, I'll I'll consent to adding something like that to my motion.
Yeah, that would be your motion is, that would just amend your motion. I I don't know if uh that's proper procedure with this, but
I don't think it needs to be amended, as long as he intends there. I mean, because it doesn't, it doesn't rule it out.
Well, well, Jeff's mo- original motion was for you to write it and
Right.
I mean, if you
Fair enough, right?
Deacon, you have, Diane has her hand raised. Oh. Diane?
Um, I hope it's not too late for a question. This just occurred to me. Is there a way that if the planning board appoints associate members when we come around to the next election cycle, that those people end up on the ballot and get confirmed by the voters? That might take care of Ken and Leslie's concerns.
I think I think it's the same thing as what Leslie was asking, because it's it's two different processes. So I think what you're saying is they would be appointed one time, but then they'd be up for election the other time, which is this hybrid that doesn't pass muster legally.
Right.
Okay.
Great minds, though. I think we're all trying to figure out how to, we like thread that needle, but it's, there's no hole in the needle.
Thank you.
So any more discussion before before I call the roll? Okay, um I'll call the roll. Nathan?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Eve?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
And Michael?
Aye.
Michael, yeah, he's not showing. Yeah, Michael, and I'm an I, we got him.
Hey.
Okay. I I think we've, I think we've accomplished what I what I wrote on the agenda.
Do we have minutes for May tenth?
Yeah, we have minutes and we need to close the hearing, I believe, is what town council said.
I'll make a motion that we close the hearing on both the access and the associate member bylaws.
Second.
Does anybody want to keep going?
Yeah.
I'll I'll call the roll. Michael?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Linda? Steve?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
I'm an I, good, good. There was a question about five ten?
Yeah, do we want to approve those minutes? Because I can move if we if we're up to that.
Done with me?
Yes, thank you very much. Very helpful.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome. Night.
Good night.
Deacon, you want me to make a motion about May tenth?
Yes.
I'll move to approve the minutes of May tenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay.
Second.
Sorry, who was the second?
I haven't heard.
No, Nathan was the second.
Oh, good, good.
Well, it'll be a relief to everybody. I didn't get to do my usual, so we don't have to share screen.
Okay, um let's see, I was distracted here for a second, but the the at the very end of those minutes, I think you find the words um frontage setback. The very last word. Yeah, it it just just take out the word setback, because it 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 should just say frontage.
Thank you.
More on more on five ten? I'll I'll call the roll. Um, Michael?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
I'm an I.
Thank you.
Great. Great. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's only eight thirty-five, Deacon, come on.
That is six thirty.
Isn't there any unintended uh?
Okay.
Second?
And did someone second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Um, discussion? I'll call the roll. Um, Nathan?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
I'm an I. We've done it.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you all the public for attending. Appreciate it.
So see you on January fourth, I mean, on June fourteenth, right, the next time?
June fourteenth, the next planning board meeting, June twelfth is town meeting.
Okay, all right. And and thank you, Tessa, for taking care of that notice with Mr. Parisi there. We appreciate that.
Yeah.
I'll clarify with Linda, too, exactly what needs to happen.
Okay.
Call me if you need to, too, Linda, I mean, um, Tessa.
Thank you, I will.
Good.
All right. Good night, all.
So, yes.
Good night.